Affordable Housing Bond and Supportive Housing Services Joint Quarterly Update. Take it away, Director Comey Colivar.
Good morning, Chair Harrington. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Comey Colivar, Housing Director. Together with the housing team, we are very excited and pleased to share with you our joint report for Affordable Housing Bond and the SHS. We also have as part of these reports, the annual report. As you can see, these have been major accomplishments that we are all excited about. This is just a tip of the iceberg. There's lots of staff in our department and other departments working behind the scenes to make all of this possible. So in the last four years, I've been very active for housing with a bond and then the supportive housing services levy. Before I hand over to Shannon, I'd like to quickly acknowledge the Board of Commissioners, our community partners, County Administrative Office, Tanya and Marnie, Mira, Simantel with HHS, Public Affairs Philip and Emily Roots, Melissa Sonzala in Housing, and also County Council Brad Anderson and Jackie Sato. But our major thanks go to you, the Board, for your leadership and support over this major work. As you can see, we have 10 housing projects under development. One of them just opened for lease up, and Shannon would give you more details. On the SHS side, we have winter shelter programs. We have about 100 people who have assessed permanent housing through our long-term, regional, long-term rental assistance, or ALA, as we call it, and then 102 units of bridge shelter. So lots of progress. And without further ado, I'd like to hand you over to Shannon Wilson, Housing Development Manager, to walk you through the housing development bond. Then Shannon will hand over to Josh Kreitz and Jess Larson to walk you through the SHS piece. So take it away, Shannon.
Good morning to your Harrington and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to be with you. As Comey said, my name is Shannon Wilson, Housing Development Manager, and I'll provide the Affordable Housing Bond update portion of this presentation. Next slide, please. And so this slide just gives you a snapshot of the cover of the report that Comey was mentioning, the overall Department of Housing Services report, and a link to that report in the PowerPoint. Next slide, please. And this is our broad agenda. So I'll be giving the update on Affordable Housing Bond, and then Josh and Jess on Supportive Housing, and then we look forward to your questions and feedback. Next slide, please. And so quickly, just to center us all in the Affordable Housing Bond, it was approved in 2018. The IGA was approved in late 2019. And there you see the total award for Washington County, which includes the three implementing jurisdictions within the county, which are the cities of Beaverton, Hillsborough, and Washington County. So total allocation of 188.26 million. And with that allocation came a unit production goal of 1,316 units in the county as a whole. And then for the county's implementation area, which the bulk of this update is about, that goal is 814 units. Next slide, please. And so first, I wanted to highlight the projects completed and under construction as of the end of 2021. This report, although it is a quarterly update because it is time for our annual report to be due to Metro, this is a brief overview of that 2021 progress report, and the full report is in your packet as well. So the first project, as Comey mentioned, that was completed is Viewfinder. It is an 81-unit project in Tigard, sponsored by Community Development Partners. It is also a partnership with the Housing Authority. And so the image on your left is the building as it is nearly complete. You can see just a couple of, this is a little bit older photo, so there's still a couple of work trucks there. But then on the right, you can see a couple images of some of the many pieces of local art that are featured in this building. So there are three local artists that were commissioned to provide art within the building, and so it was just to give you a sample of some of that art. And as this was a county's Phase 1 Metro Bond project, and the first one completed in our implementation area, it was also the first opportunity for us to align the Affordable Housing Bond with the work of the Supportive Housing Services team. And so in this project, we're able to work with Community Development Partners and their service partner, the Good Neighbor Center. And so there are 27 units of permanent supportive housing in this building that are supported with the housing provided with the bond, and then the funds for the supportive services and rental assistance through the Supportive Housing Services measure. Next slide, please. And one of the projects under construction is the Valfre at Avenue to 26. This is a 30-16 unit project in Forest Grove. It began construction in July of 2021. And this is a turnkey project. So DCM Communities is the developer, and then the long-term owner and operator is the Housing Authority. We are also partnering with Bienna Star and Sequoia Mental Health, so both in the lease-up and marketing stage of the project, as well as in the services, so resident services and supportive services. There will be eight permanent supportive housing units at this site. Next slide, please. Oh, I see there is a question, Chair.
Back on that prior slide with the Valfre, could you please, you used a phrase, you said it was a turnkey project. That, as far as I know, it's not a project-turnkey project. I don't know that I understand that term of art.
Oh, right. Yes, good question. Thank you, Chair. So Project Turnkey is a state program that provided funding to purchase, to acquire property last year for the use of, for COVID respite and recovery from wildfires. I'm sure Josh and Comey know more about that. But in terms of the term "turnkey" itself, it's when a developer is, when there's a developer of a project who does all the work to assemble the financing and works with the contractor and the development team to get it built. And then once it's built, they kind of basically turn the keys over to another partner, who is then the long-term owner and operator. So it literally is handing over of the ownership. Thank you. Next slide, please. Another project under construction is Terrace Glen. This is 144 units in Tigard, just across the street from Washington Square Mall and the Washington Square Transit Center, is sponsored by Related Northwest in partnership with the Housing Authority. So it began construction in November, late November, but just had a groundbreaking just last month. Next slide, please. And then the Aloha Inn project began construction or began renovation work in December of 2021. This is the county's first all PSH project. So we'll provide 54 units in a converted motel. And a lot of the renovation work is fire and life safety, as well as adding kitchenettes. And then, as you can see in the image on the left, a lot of demo work as well. There is replacement of some bathroom fixtures as well, on kind of an as-needed, as-needed basis. So we're excited that that project especially is under construction, as it'll be a great benefit and a great alignment, again, between the Affordable Housing Bond and Supportive Housing Services work. Next slide, please. So there is a lot of additional detail in the 2021 progress report in your packet. So these two tables kind of summarize that detailed information around the county's work in achieving the goals that are in the local implementation strategy for the Affordable Housing Bond, and then also with funds committed. And so this is similar information to what we've provided before, because we do have the same 10 projects. It's just that we're now working those all through the pipeline and getting those under construction and underway. So you can see the goals in the left-hand side of the chart. And then as you work your way across, I think the column that has the percentage of goal completed or underway is kind of the easiest way to see the progress the county has made towards those goals. So you can see that nearly all of them are complete, or in the case of the permanent supportive housing units have been exceeded. And then the table on the bottom has the funds, so the total funds available to the county, again, the county's implementation area, and then the funds committed. So we've committed 85% of the funds, but we've achieved overall 99.8% of the unit production goal. So we are positioned to exceed our unit production goal. And you can see the note on the bottom, very bottom of your slide, or hopefully you can see it. We do intend to release a second NOFA, Notice of Funding Availability, for those remaining funds of the 17.39 million this summer. So more to come on that. Next slide, please. Another key goal in implementation of the Affordable Housing Bond program is inequitable contracting. And so in the county's local implementation strategy, there was a goal that each project achieve a 20% COVID firm contracting goal. So that means that 20% of the funds paid for construction are hard costs, and then also for development costs, the soft costs in a project, were paid to minority or women-owned firms or emerging small businesses, the MWEFS acronym. And so the Viewfinder, which is completed, and then all the projects under construction that I just mentioned, those are all either meeting or exceeding that 20% goal. And in addition to that, we are also tracking workforce. So that's the hours, the demographics of who is actually onsite completing the work. And so there's a highlight specifically from the Valfre at Avenue to 26 project. So as of 12/31, so that was about six months of construction, 63% of the hours worked onsite were completed by people of color. So we don't have specific goals in our implementation strategy around workforce demographics, but that is information that we are collecting. And then another area that has, that was not included in our implementation strategy, but has emerged over the past six to nine months, has been around climate resiliency. So in September of 2021, Metro had released a formal policy statement on air conditioning. And that statement, really, it heavily encourages in-unit air conditioning for all Affordable Housing Bond projects. And so all 10 of the county projects do have air conditioning onsite in the common areas. And so eight of those projects then do have the in-unit. So every apartment has their own air conditioner. And then the two additional projects are providing ports, so residents can easily connect up portable air conditioning units. And Metro Council did recently approve additional funding for air conditioning and for cooling plans broadly. And so that will be coming to your board sometime in the near future in the form of an amendment to the IGA. So more to come on that as well. Next slide, please. And two other areas of the 2021 progress report I wanted to highlight are community engagement and equitable lease-up. So community engagement has always been an important part of implementation of the Affordable Housing Bond program. We had our first phase of community engagement that helped us develop the local implementation strategy. And then we had the second phase of community engagement that has really been centered around connecting with communities of color through working with culturally specific organizations. And the feedback that has been received has really helped inform project design. So it's led to changes in each project, changes in the layout of project, changes in the community amenities that are provided onsite. And so we had some of those listening sessions in 2020. And then in 2021, we had three additional listening sessions, and then followed that up with two online surveys. So one of the surveys was targeting multifamily, or about multifamily housing in general. And then the second survey was specific to senior housing, housing for older adults. And so there's detailed demographic information in your report about their respondents. It's on page 22 of the report. But overall, so 75% of the respondents for the multifamily survey were people of color, and 84.6% of the respondents for the senior survey were people of color. And overall, for both the surveys, 67% of respondents were from households that are low-income. So the surveys were translated into all the county's safe harbor languages, and really worked with our community partners to get the word out about those surveys and the listening sessions as well. And then for the equitable lease-up component, that's really been a new area and something where the Viewfinder, again, is our Phase 1 and pilot project, is a way we've been able to really learn from and kind of test things out there. And so as a part of that process, we've met with all of our culturally specific partners. We met with Apoano and Bienna Star and the Somali Empowerment Circle, and met with staff from those organizations, and first just to get feedback on how to best reach the different communities that they're working with. We really wanted to provide the information in a way that was easy to understand. Often, a lot of this language can, around lease-up and tax credit compliance, can have a lot of jargon and be very challenging to translate, even when it is provided in a different language. And so we've been really working with these partners and with the property management company to really produce some materials that can be easily translated and also easily understood about the lease-up process and about what individuals can expect when they go to a meeting with a property manager, and what materials they should bring, and that type of thing. So it's something that we're developing, that we've been working on with the Viewfinder, and they've been great partners, both Community Development Partners and their management company as well, and something we'll be continuing to work on as the other projects complete and go through their lease-up process as well. Next slide, please. And so just to finish my section of the report, I just wanted to highlight a couple of the things that are happening in this first quarter of 2022. So we have two projects that will close and begin construction before the end of March, or they're planned to, they're working towards that. And they both just, it's just kind of a coincidence, they end up being both of the projects sponsored by Bridge Housing. But one of those is Gold Crest Apartments, 75 units in the South Cooper Mountain area of Beaverton. And then there is the Aloha Housing Project, 82 units, near the intersection of TV Highway and 172nd. And so with that, I want to thank you for your time, and I'm going to hand things over to Josh Kreitz, our Assistant Director. Thank you.
Thanks, Shannon. Well, good morning, Chair Harrington, Board. Again, for the record, my name is Josh Kreitz. I'm the Assistant Director of the Housing Department. So I'm going to be briefed this morning, but I just wanted to take a minute. Chair Harrington, at the beginning of this presentation, you said, you know, how busy the Housing Department's been for the last three years, and boy, have we. So I just want to take a minute and recognize how far we've come, I think, especially in the last year. You know, a year ago today, we barely had any staff at all working on SHS. We were working on a local implementation plan. And, you know, but I think our community, I think this board, our department, our partners throughout the county, which are just amazing, had a vision for what this could absolutely be. And so as we sit here a year later with a second quarter report, you know, I'm happy to say that we're housing, you know, nearly 100 individuals already, and Jess will get into the numbers, I don't want to steal the thunder. We have 18 different organizations under contract, many of them culturally specific organizations. New shelters have been created. We've expanded our winter shelter capacity. And this has all happened within a period of a year. That's just such a major, major, like, move, I think, has happened in this county. So we understand there's a lot of work to do. There's a lot of areas of bodies of work that we haven't started that we need to start. But we're proud of the progress that this team has made and will continue to make with the support from this board and our community. With that said, I'm going to turn over to Jess, who will now go through our quarter two report, and then we'll be happy to take any questions at the end.
Thank you, Josh. Good morning, Chair Harrington, members of the board. My name is Jess Larson. I use she and her pronouns, and I'm your Supportive Housing Services Program Manager, and pleased to be with you today, as Josh described, with our second quarter update or our half-year mark in our first year of programmatic implementation. To begin this update, we thought it would be helpful, perhaps, to start with the story of one of our new workers in the community. So this is the story of Emma Burridge. She's on the left here, standing with her colleague Rosie from Just Compassion, and they happen to be speaking with Congresswoman Bonamichi on a recent tour of the shelter that a few of you were on as well. Emma was just hired up this year for the winter shelter season. So she's working as a winter shelter worker at the Beaverton Community Center, where they are operating, Just Compassion is operating a winter shelter. And she says she's had many years working with nonprofits, but now that she is in this work of direct service with individuals experiencing homelessness, she experiences the work to be transformative. That was her word. And she shared with us a story of a gentleman she worked with, enrolling him into their program once it opened in November, and how she noted how sullen he was. He couldn't make eye contact with her. His energy was very low. And she went through all the questions, got him all the information, completed the full enrollment process, and then walked him over to where he'd be sleeping, his spot in the shelter for the winter, and his affect, she said, immediately changed. He suddenly understood that he was going to have a safe, dry place to sleep every night this winter because of the winter shelter. And from there, she's begun building a relationship with him. He's gotten full-time work, which he gets to every day, well-fed, and, you know, showered and ready for the day from the shelter. And he's saving up his paychecks to move into his new apartment before winter shelter closes this season, work that Emma is helping him to navigate so that he can find and secure that housing placement. So hopefully this story helps you, helps bridge kind of the pieces of the system and all of the parts of the work of transitioning, transforming, working from homelessness to engagement and relationship building, navigating the hurdles that create homelessness and perpetuate homelessness, and ultimately securing permanent housing for the folks we serve. And in the presentation today, we're going to go through those various bodies of work and share with you our updates from the programs on the ground. And Emma's story is a good representation of all of that, I think. Next slide, please. So when we think of our system of care, we generally think of it in these three areas of work or bodies of programming. We have the Shelter and Outreach Programs. That's where Emma is working in, in meeting people where they're at in the system, or in their own homelessness, and helping to build those relationships, to begin the hard work of overcoming barriers and securing stable housing, and the other wraparound supports they might need. And that is the second area of work, our case management and wraparound services. Those are the folks who understand how to navigate the system, who connect people to those long-term services and supports they need to overcome the barriers or regain stability in their life and certainly secure housing. And then the third area of work is our housing and rent assistance programs. These programs often work behind the scenes. They are the financial tools that make housing affordable for the people we serve. And there are many different kinds of housing rent assistance programs we need, because every household we're working with requires different financial assistance for different periods of time. And we work to tailor those rent assistance programs to meet the needs of the households we're serving. So we're going to go through these three areas of work today in our specific programs, but this is generally how we build an entire system of care responding to homelessness. So it's also done in coordination with our continuum of care programs and our partners at Community Action and all the other funding sources we have. Next slide, please. Also working in the background is our coordinated entry system. This is Community Connect. And that is the tool that the case managers and the workers of the system use to navigate all of those services, making sure people get from point A to point B successfully. And all of our work results in stable housing. So that is the tool behind the scenes, bringing this system together. Next slide. Okay, so we're going to start with our Shelter and Outreach Program update. Some of the highlights have been mentioned already, that our winter shelter program is off and running, providing 187 extra beds of shelter this winter. We're actually working to expand that even further in the second quarter, just to better meet the need in our community right now. We also launched an inclement weather shelter program to ensure no turnaway capacity during inclement weather events, severe weather in the winter. For example, we had a nine-day holiday storm, you may recall, during which we opened up two additional locations and served a total of additional 88 people who were otherwise unsheltered, to just provide life-saving sheltering services during those events. And we're going to make sure that this extra inclement weather capacity is available year-round, so we can anticipate weather events such as summer heat waves and smoke from fire, from forest fires, et cetera. And then you're well familiar with our bridge shelter program. We still have 102 beds in operation in the three different programs. So that is the current work underway in our sheltering program. Next slide demonstrates what's coming next. So we will, we are actually currently working on responding to a couple different COVID outbreaks. It seems that these situations have stabilized, but we've learned a lot about how to work and coordinate together across service providers, across shelters, to ensure people had a safe place to recover or to isolate during the spread of Omicron, and also making sure we had enough staff coverage, because some, many staff, we were down some staffing in our shelters. So it was a great test of our coordination, and we'll continue to be improving upon that as we continue to navigate COVID in our congregate shelters and just our general outreach work. As Shannon was mentioning in her presentation, we're also getting ready to transition our shelter program at the Aloha Inn to a PSH program, Permanent Supportive Housing. So some of the guests who are staying there will be transitioning, hopefully, into housing or other shelter capacity as needed. And then you're well aware of, since our December meeting with you, that we're getting ready to launch an expansive community engagement series to begin the conversation with our community about how we go about expanding our shelter capacity in Washington County to provide year-round shelter capacity. It doesn't, it's not ideal to have to start and stop a shelter program every winter season. What we aim for is year-round shelter capacity, but in order to do that, we need to have permanently located shelter programs. And in order to do that, we are beginning with a big conversation with our community, so we can co-create community guidelines for those future shelter programs. So that's our body of sheltering work underway and in the near future. The next slide gives you a quick snapshot of that capacity. Before the SHS funding was available, we had 44 year-round shelter beds in Washington County. With the addition of SHS funding, we are able to fund the additional 102 shelter, with bridge shelter programs, which are operating as year-round right now. And then additionally, we put them separate here because it's just winter, but the 187 beds that are in operation right now. But as you know, we're working towards a year-round goal of additional 250, which would give us a systems-wide goal of having almost 300 year-round shelter beds. So that's what we're aiming towards. All right, we're moving along. I'll continue on with these updates into the case management and wraparound support services updates. So as Josh mentioned, we've hired up 18 of the 38 case managers so far. And when I say "we," I mean our community-based service providers. They are still hiring. The 38 represents the current contracting capacity that our 18 organizations have. So they're about halfway in hiring and training those workers, and those 18 staff are case managers' boots on the ground right now, working with individuals, getting them enrolled in the programs, looking for housing, getting them ready to move into their future permanent housing with the ALA vouchers. So that work is well underway, but we're about halfway in building that capacity this year. We've also launched a cohort to support our culturally specific organizations. We invested in some capacity building for those organizations right away, but we also wanted to provide an ongoing learning space and support space to further understand how we can support the capacity building of our culturally specific organizations, so that we can build out a broader system of culturally specific services in Washington County. Next slide. Here we have what's coming next. We have some really exciting pilots that we're going to launch in the second half of the year. These pilots represent a lot of research with our community partners, understanding where the gaps are in the system and how we can leverage the, leverage other capacity, and also plan ahead to build out capacity. So first is a new program, a pilot program, we're calling Housing System Navigators. These are going to be housing systems experts, trained and supported by some of our housing partner organizations, but embedded in various health and human services case management teams. So there will be five that we start with, Hawthorne Walk-In Center Development Disabilities, Developmental Disabilities, Behavioral Health Intensive Care Coordination Program, Disability Aging and Veterans Services, or the DAVEs program, and Maternal Child and Family Health Program. And these five case management programs in HHS will work with a new Housing Systems Navigator to figure out how to provide for the housing needs of the clients or participants that they're already serving. So we're leveraging those relations. figure out how to provide for the housing needs of the clients or participants that they're already serving. So we're leveraging those relationships, those supports already in place so that they don't have to be re-enrolled in a new system of care. We can rely on the system of care that it currently exists, but bring into that system the, the expertise of our housing system and help connect people to those housing resources quickly. The second pilot we'll be launching in the second, uh, half of the year is Supportive Employment to, to build out our housing workforce. As you know, as we're hearing from all of our community partners, hiring is hard right now. There are a lot of vacancies and there are a lot of new positions we need to fill. And in fact, it turns out when it comes to shelter workers and caseworkers and housing navigators, sometimes the people who are best equipped and skilled for these roles are people who've lived this experience themselves. People who've experienced housing instability or homelessness. And so this Supportive Employment Program, uh, will build, uh, provide training and support, uh, to prepare people who've had lived experience to get jobs in housing, um, programs as caseworkers of our expanded system. Um, they will get the training and the Supportive Employment Coaching kind of work, and then they'll also get, um, uh, an internship in one of our service provider organizations where they can get, um, on-the-ground experience before they launch into their future career. So this both builds out expertise for people who've lived experience, provide good-paying jobs, but also helps us meet our workforce needs in, as we grow this system. Okay, next slide, please. So this, um, little table provides you just a quick snapshot of how we're building that capacity or where we're at in that capacity right now. So before we had the SHS funding, there were about nine funded caseworkers, housing caseworkers specifically in Washington County. We've added, um, uh, eighteen, um, and we're going to be aiming for that full, uh, thirty-eight by the end of the year. So by the end of this year, we expect to have fifty-one boots on the ground, helping people navigate, um, the, their housing needs and find secure and permanent housing. All right. And then the last segment of, uh, my updates for you today, move into our rent assistance programs. So as has been mentioned so far, ninety households has been, have been fully leased up in our Arla program, the Regional Long-Term Rent Assistance Program. Um, we have a goal of five hundred this year, so we are not halfway in this halfway mark, but that is, has a lot to do with the amount of capacity building we've had to do in the first six months to get ready, to get, um, our caseworkers trained up, hired and trained up, uh, so that they can begin this work of housing. So we expect to see this number grow quite rapidly in the coming months and we'll bring you, um, uh, another update on that in our third quarter. We also had nineteen households whose rent was protected, or sorry, pardon me, their housing was protected with one-time rent assistance. Because of the limitations of the emergency rent assistance funds, we wanted to provide more flexible one-time assistance for especially culturally-specific organizations. And, um, that program became a model for us that we'll be building off of and launching in the coming year. And I think that's on my next slide. Next slide, please. Thank you. Um, so what's next ahead in our housing and rent assistance programs? Again, the Aloha Inn. So we'll be transitioning that program to fifty-four permanent supportive housing homes for people in our community. Um, that it'll be opening in a phased, um, approach. So we hope to have one half of the building opened as PSH, um, early summer and then the other half later this summer. And then we're also planning for the expansion of two different rent assistance programs. In addition to Arla, the Long-Term Rent Assistance Program, we'll also be providing rapid resolution, uh, one-time eviction prevention or homelessness, um, resolution, um, program and a rent assistance program. And then also, uh, a program called Rapid Re-Housing, which generally tends to be a little more, um, temporary, two months to twenty-four months of rent assistance offered, often tapering down as a household's financial stability strengthens over the course of the program. But these programs tend to serve people who, um, don't need that long-term rent assistance tool. They either have a different rent assistance tool and they're having a one-time situation that puts their housing at risk. Or they are working household who can afford the rent on an ongoing basis, but need help getting stabilized first. So these additional rent assistance programs will give our housing caseworkers many tools to work with to better meet the needs, uh, the variety of needs they face in, uh, working with the, the community. Next slide, please. All right. And then this is just a quick snapshot of, um, some of our supportive housing capacity, not some of our supportive housing capacity underway right now. So before, uh, the Supportive Housing Services Measure Program launched, we had just under five hundred PSH placements. Those would be programs like VASH for veterans or Shelter Plus Care and otherwise. With, um, the first year of our program, we've been able to add a capacity for an additional five hundred. So we're almost, we have a system now that's almost doubled in one year. But that's not the end of our growth in supportive housing. We're anticipating, um, a, a commitment, we've made a commitment to add sixteen hundred and sixty-five when this program is at full capacity. And so we will be able to sustain a system of supportive housing with, um, more than tw- about twenty-two hundred supportive housing units. So that really demonstrates the amount of growth underway right now in our county for supportive housing. And in closing, just a quick view of our overall year-one goals. Next slide, please. So we made three primary goals for this first year of our program. Um, creating supportive housing, helping stabilize other households who don't need supportive housing, but need some kind of other um, intervention to establish housing stability and then expanding our year-round shelter capacity. We've nearly created that capacity in, um, our first, for our first goal of supportive housing, but we haven't filled that capacity. So we've got a lot of work to do to house folks in that new capacity that's been created. Next quarter, we'll be focusing on that Population B focus. The Rapid Re-Housing and Rapid Res- Res- Resolution Rent Assistance Tools will build out our capacity for our second goal, and we expect to see those outcomes significantly increase. And then, as you have heard, we are on track with our year-round shelter goal, though it is important to note that, um, all of our bridge shelter programs will likely be transitioned to future permanent housing programs. So these are not um, year-round shelters that we will be able to sustain permanently and will have to, that is the importance of doing our community engagement to find those year-round sites for sheltering.
Yes, I, um, I just wanted to jump in and piggyback on something you said on Population B, which is, we should also remember how much money has come into the system for folks who are at risk of losing their housing or eviction in the last year, state money, federal money. And so a lot of that money has come into the system to help a lot of folks who would have been at risk of falling into homelessness if it weren't for the assistance. So that's one thing I just want to mention. I mean, tens of millions have come into Washington County there.
Thank you, Josh. That's a helpful point of context, and that's why we did not focus on our Population B programs to start with and why we focused on Population A. But we're getting there. All right, next slide. And I think our last slide. So we turn it back to you, um, Chair and Board of Commissioners. What questions and direction do you have for our team working on the Affordable Housing Bond and the Supportive Housing Services Programs? And, um, do you support our submission of the two reports to Metro, the Affordable Housing Bond Annual Report and the Supportive Housing Services Quarterly Report? Thank you.
Thank you, team. Just amazing accomplishments in such a short period of time. Uh, really demonstrates your expertise in this domain, your passion and commitment. So thank you for taking on these ambitious goals. I know when each of these funding measures were defined, we were a little bit, uh, concerned. Uh, we knew we could do good work. Uh, we knew the need was great, but we wanted to make sure, given the voter-approved funding, that we would be successful at delivering. And with what you've presented today, the answer is a resounding yes. So commissioners, what questions and comments do you have particularly for the two questions that staff has asked of us today? Anything or just give a thumbs up if you're all set. Go ahead, Commissioner Trace and Vice Chair Willie.
Well, first of all, congratulations and, and thank you for all of your hard work. And I definitely su- support the submission of the, um, annual report and the quarterly report. I just want to get out that piece. And, uh, one question I have is, is, given what we've been through in, in the past year, uh, are there anything, what are the biggest lessons learned that, uh, you've experienced? Uh, it, kind of the ahas, the, the take, you know, the changes in philosophy or direction or anything like that? I'm just curious what, what your experiences have been. And I'd, I'd ask each one of you that question.
Well, I, I could kick us off and say, I, I think learning to be flexible and, and adaptable in the environments that we've worked in, right? I mean, I think we, we have all these goals on both of these major bond programs and just being able to, to scale up quickly, meet the needs of the community, change when necessary. Listen, if, if shelters are a big thing, like inclement shelters, all of a sudden we have a big winter storm, then we need to surge into that area, right, and pull back a little bit. And I think the, the expectations on us as a county and as a department are huge right now. And so just understanding, you know, where we can make the greatest impact and understanding where we might need to wait a few months to move on other areas have been just one of the, the greatest learnings. Again, the Housing Department had a budget of forty million, you know, a couple of years ago, and when Comey and I were looking at, and now we're up to a hundred and thirty million. So it's just flexibility and understanding how to scale.
Jess, what about you?
Oh, every day is a new learn, learning opportunity. It seems like right now for me, Commissioner, um, I think, um, it's not just us that's learning, it's our community-based partners and learning how to support and coach and um, teach really a new culture of, um, of how, uh, uh, of housing first. Um, we talk about housing first a lot, but now we're putting housing first into practice because we have housing tools. And a lot of our system of response to homelessness has been based on the limited capacity we had to do outreach and talk to individuals, give them bus tickets, make sure they had access to a, a food pantry or something like that. But we didn't have solutions to homelessness. Now we have solutions to homelessness with housing. And now we're teaching and training and supporting our organizational partners and an entire cultural shift of creating, being, um, being the solvers of homelessness, not being the, the, um, support to peop- not just providing support to people experiencing homelessness, but providing that transformation to, to, to stable housing. It's, it's a, a big cultural shift and incredible opportunity.
Yeah, thank you. And, and I'd ask the same question of Shannon and Comey. I mean, you, you've both been around a while. What, I mean, did you expect that you'd be here at this point in time with with these resources, with, you know, with the level of the issue that we're dealing with?
Uh, yeah. Great question, Commissioner Trace. Yeah, in terms of resources, no, we, we, well, the man, when the Metro Bond passed, it was a big aha moment that, like, the community is willing to support this work. So that was a breath of fresh air. Um, but we, we have learned to adapt with it. I think Washington County is actually the leader in implementing the, the Metro Affordable Housing Bond in terms of the numbers or what we've done in the time. Uh, but yes, the costs are going up. That's another lesson. Pandemic, um, pandemic and then supply chain. And, uh, and also the workers, the builders have to be very cautious with the COVID protocols at work. So those are things we have to adapt to. And on the homelessness side, obviously, the challenge there is this is a population that has a lot of conditions, a lot of issues. And so, uh, we learned that it's a system. It's not everybody that can just get into housing and be successful. People need support. And so, and my last point is the dollars, you know, the cost is going up, not just to build a housing, to maintain and operate it, plus providing human services, which is, uh, you know, counseling, mental health, all of those are not caused that the real estate can afford long-term. So those are my lessons.
Thank you. Shannon?
Thank you, Commissioner Trace. Um, I would add the, um, around flexibility and also, um, creativity. So in working with these, um, developers, you know, we've seen a lot more of creative, creative ideas that this funding has brought. So in terms of, um, you know, engaging with culturally-specific organizations, in terms of providing uh, units affordable to extremely low-income households at that thirty percent median family income, that was a, you know, the goal that seemed the most challenging, you know, out of all the unit production goals. Um, and so this funding and then the support, you know, from your board as well with the Housing Production Opportunity Fund, that's, um, supported several of the projects that we have in the, in the pipeline. It's just really led to more creative solutions that I think provide better, um, housing the better needs, the commu- better meets the needs of the community, um, overall.
Thank you. It, great report and thanks for a little insight into, you know, your thoughts about what's happening. So I appreciate it.
Vice Chair Willie.
Yeah, that's a great question, Pam. I, and I really appreciated the the responses to that. It gives us a little bit of insight, b- behind the curtain, so to speak, of what you guys are dealing with on a daily basis. And it also, you know, the thing that I wrote down during your presentation was basically, you know, to use a cliche, we're building it as, as we fly it. And uh, you have been enduring that for the last year. These, um, this information you presented to us today really is a very strong message. It says you've been working hard and you've been successful. You had a vision and you certainly have put that into place. So, um, congratulations on that. And yes, I, I would support the submission of this. I know that we worked with all three counties, Multnomah and Clackamas, in the development of IGAs and these programs. Um, is there a, is there a point in time when the, this would, would work, what didn't work? Um, do you give each other that kind of feedback or is everybody just kind of, uh, I won't say flying solo, but, but trying to get their own job and their own work done?
Well, I, I can start off. I, I, I think across the entire department, we have a lot of touchpoints with our, our colleagues across the region. I know, um, at the Housing Authority level, I meet with all the executive directors. Comey and I meet with the executive directors of all the housing authorities. So we're, you know, comparing notes, what's working, what's not working, what's happening, uh, industry-wide. I think on the SHS and homeless side, I know that Jess and her team work pretty prolifically with the other two counties and they're meeting weekly. That's not like a touchpoint that's happening. And, and Jess can speak more into detail of that, but there's, we, meeting weekly and sometimes multiple times a week in different areas of the work to see what's working, what should we be visioning ahead. And, um, you know, and again, Comey can speak to us more, but Comey's our Director of the Statewide Housing Authorities of Oregon Association. So Comey's been leading the way on all those connect points. In fact, we have an all-day meeting tomorrow. So he's been leading the, the way on that area. For us, so yeah, a lot of connect points across the, across the organization. I'll maybe call me out if there's anything I missed there.
You covered it. Thank you, Josh.
Well, that, that's always good to hear because, uh, you know, collaboration's always good. We don't all have to make the same mistakes. Um, so, um, uh, one, one more quick question, and that is, I didn't see any information on the Econo Lodge. Um, that Turnkey Project. So, uh, w- was that supposed to be, would that be included in here typically, or where would I get some more information on that? Just again, uh, because it was obviously a difficult, uh, project and continues to be. I'd just like to have some informational update on that. I think I may have, if I look at my calendar, I may have a meeting with, um, Jess or Josh or somebody, uh, to get that. So if I'm getting ahead of it, then just tell me to look at my calendar and I'll wait.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, the, uh, the project Turnkey that, uh, purchased the Econo Lodge is our, in the SHS program. It's, uh, one of our three bridge shelter programs. So it was included here in the presentation. It's still under operations by Greater Good Northwest. Um, operating sixty, um, uh, bridge shelter beds for folks who are medically vulnerable and working on permanent housing placements. And things are going very well there. Um, there's an, an additional effort that has been launched, which you'll hear more about in your briefing, um, called the Calle Diaz, um, effort, uh, led by our Chief Equity Officer, Latricia Tillman, um, to continue, um, the work and conversation with our partners at Latino Policy Council around supporting the, the business district on Tenth Avenue, um, also known as Calle Diaz.
around supporting the Business District on Tenth Avenue, also known as Calle Diaz.
Okay, all right. And then lastly, you probably didn't even know, but you had a great picture of some workforce training there. On slide number nine, you had a couple of volunteers. You were trying to teach how to put beds together. So I'm glad you didn't point them out. I'll point out Juan Carlos, Metro Counselor Juan Carlos. And then his assistant was, needed a lot of training, but it was fun. Thank you for giving us that offer. I'm done.
Commissioner Rogers, you're unmuted.
Sure. I will recognize that worker. I think he's on the camera right now. Did a fine job and always appreciate people who do that sort of charitable work. That's terrific. Comey, we've talked so many different times, and I've always applauded you, and I do again, and your staff and all the people associated. So I certainly would recommend that this be presented. I have no issue there. My question is and has been and always will be, I guess, how sustainable are we? Are we looking at the long run? I always, I can remember when I was a young man and got a first car and said, wow, that's wonderful. I wouldn't, I guess I wasn't so young, because I never don't, out of college almost. But then I didn't think about, you know, we've got to maintain this thing. We've got to put gas in it and we've got to ensure it. And we've got to do all of the things that are necessary. So with the advent of all of these additional units, are we doing financial planning for the future to say, geez, someday we'll have lots of units, but will we have the funding to maintain the infrastructure? Is that something your department is doing and continuing to do to make certain that we're not going to get caught with some delayed maintenance down the road? That's my question.
Thank you for your kind words, Commissioner Rogers. Part of our financial modeling includes long-term sustainability. As you know, we'll be coming back to the board for approvals on our portfolio rehab, which is a result of, it's a hundred and seventeen million dollar transaction, forty-five million in rehab for our portfolio. And that's something we want to avoid in the future, which is deferred maintenance. The new thing, which nobody has a crystal ball is, and I mentioned that in my response to Commissioner Trese, is the cost, operating costs are going up, and we don't have a very good way of estimating or controlling for that. But in terms of general maintenance, sustaining the portfolio, we think we have that planned well in our financial models. We had a flooding at the Aloha Inn. It wasn't a natural flood. I mean, I was there that evening, as was Brad, and most likely it was human error of some sort. So those type of incidents we can't control. For we are hoping that with our financial plan and our model for rehab and also working with our colleagues in human services, behavioral health, we can give people the services they need to stay in housing long-term. But if your question is, do we have a way to control for human behavior in the future? That's a work in progress.
Comey, you did a great job as normal. That wasn't my really question. As long as you have a financial plan, that's what's important.
We do have a financial plan. We do have a financial plan. Thank you.
That's the right question. And the answer, I meant. Thanks.
Chair Hampton, I don't have any question. Great job, everyone. And thumbs up for submitting these reports.
Thank you, Commissioner Phi. I'll do sweep as chair. I first want to start with how proud I am of all of you and staff. I've already talked about those ambitious and audacious goals. You've really delivered and continued to do so. I remember one of the first meetings that I had around homelessness as chair was right here in downtown Hillsborough with St. Matthew's Church and their food pantry and homeless services. Really bare bones, in their own words, bare-bones safety net services to help people stay alive, not thrive, but stay alive. They'd been doing this work, remember, this is pre-pandemic back in 2019. They originally started this work to help address food safety, but expanded based on community needs and the growing number of homeless folks in downtown Hillsborough. But they'd been doing this work for over a decade with volunteers and through their own charity in their hearts. And they said to me, when are you in government going to stop relying upon us to do this heavy lifting? We're tired. We didn't intend to do this permanently. That was a key ingredient to motivate me to help shape the Supportive Housing Services Measure, in addition to all that I had learned as a Metro Counselor about affordable housing and homelessness in shaping that Affordable Housing Bond. Also, beginning in 2019, was an education process as a new member of this commission about the housing continuum. And how many times did Comey and Shannon have to step me through the housing continuum as well as with Annette Evans? Emergency housing, transitional housing, permanent affordable housing and workforce housing, let alone onward into the fuller housing spectrum with market rate housing and executive housing. You know, in that first year, the three of us as new commissioners were hearing a lot from our small but mighty housing team about how much work they were doing to seek additional grant monies through federal programs and state programs. It seemed like Annette was working a sixth day of each work week to work on those grant applications. So the voter-approved funding has made a world of difference. And you've highlighted for us how you've built an incredibly strong foundation, both to sustain those new affordable housing units and to put, build that strong foundation for the funding, the ten-year funding of the Supportive Housing Services Program, so that we end chronic homelessness and ensure that folks who are at risk of experiencing homelessness now will not become homeless. So we have net zero homelessness. Thank you so much. And keep going. We know there's, you've highlighted it here, finishing the portfolio of Affordable Housing Bond programs, continuing to work with our partners on that as well as through the houselessness program. So thank you, thank you, thank you. You are awesome.
Yes, Commissioner Trese? I guess I forgot to ask the question I usually ask, which is, how are we communicating these results? Will this go on horizons, you know, the submission? Can we also make that more publicly available? I think that that's an important piece as well.
I could say, I think our comms team have been really helpful in getting this messaging out. I think I've seen, since I've come here, I've just seen the amount of positive press around our programs kind of going through the roof. So I think Philip and Emily have been doing a really good job. We'll get this out on the website. We'll get this shared internally and externally. And I would say the newsletters have been really well-received. The original SHS and now the Housing Department newsletters have been really well-received to get more information out there to the broader community. So that's a great question. We want to make sure folks understand all the work that's happening and all the successes we're having.
I can tell you that many of us reported this morning, or several of us reported this morning, that we had met with the new individual who's assigned to Washington County from Pamplin Media. And one of his requests was information around this program. And while we've been talking, I asked Megan to forward the link to him. I should have realized that I could go through the Your Comms people as well. So my apologies, but I do think that we need to be talking about this, you know, in a broader sense. So thank you.
Commissioner Trese, we'll have Philip Bransford reach out to Pamplin.
And I forgot to say yes to your second question. So it's unanimous. We're all ready for you to move forward and submit the Affordable Housing Bond Annual Report and the SHS Quarterly Report to Metro. Terrific job. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioners. We appreciate your support.
Keep up the good work.